Special Ad Hoc Committee, November 14th, 2024.
Got a booming voice here.
Are you going to call the meeting to order, sir?
Calling the meeting to order for the November 14th, 2024, Ad Hoc Committee for Revisions to the Zoning and Planning. Sorry. It's open. Topics for discussion are Chapters 1137, Purpose and Authorization; Chapter 1139, Definitions; 1141, Administrative Bodies and Their Duties; 1143, Enforcement and Penalties; 1145, Amendments; 1147, Appeals and Variances; 1149, Conditional Uses; and 1151, Nonconformities. I've read through, I started with Chapter 1137, Purpose and Authorization, and from what I have found so far, mostly the only thing I've seen is some grammar issues in wording. Whenever I found an issue, I highlighted it just so it could be changed in the verbiage. There'll have to be some reference to Ohio Revised Code or Administrative Code to see if there's been any changes at the state level for the wording of these sections.
If I may, the good thing about uploading these codified ordinances through American Legal is that when I update them, so do they.
Oh, okay.
So everything is current through 2024.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. So I didn't see any issues with the first part of 1137. Point 01, the title, through 1137, oh six, the separability. And then into, um, then into the definitions on 1139, oh two. I'm just curious what your guys' thoughts are on bed and breakfast for the meaning of it being a single-family dwelling. I thought bed and breakfast would be considered multi-family since it's, you could have possibly more than one family. I mean, either the host family and the people that are staying there, that would be a, that would be a multi-family unit.
I notice we don't have the definition for a multi-family unit under definitions.
Multi-family.
If we change that to read a multi-family unit, would we then?
We need to add that section. This came up in council a couple of months ago, I remember. So this will have to be added. Definition of multi-family.
Doesn't that mean that the structure is a single-family dwelling in which the lodging be provided, not necessarily the occupants at the time of reasonable?
Yeah. Yeah, that would, yeah, that's true.
And then it talks about in not more than three sleeping rooms are devoted to such accommodations. My first thought is, how many rooms are out?
Do we even need to have that? The number of rooms?
I wouldn't think so.
I mean, if you want that many people in your house.
That'd be a question for Mr. Goebrich.
Yeah.
What is the question?
On bed and breakfast, on our definition, it says for the dwelling, not more than three sleeping rooms devoted to such accommodations.
Does it have to be three, Brandon?
No, doesn't have to be three.
We don't really even need a specification, or do we, for the number of sleeping rooms?
I don't think we do.
It could be one or one or more. I mean, I think that section could be stripped.
From after dwelling, I get rid of the rest of that sentence.
And we've agreed with what Mr. Stuckert said, that we don't need to change this single-family dwelling.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And with not changing that to multi-family, then we don't have to worry about having a definition for multi-family.
But we still need to add multi-family because there's not one in further down on definitions.
Okay. Because there's, where it talks about multi-family elsewhere, okey-dokey.
So it could be a single-family dwelling or a multi-family dwelling, you're saying?
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with that.
So we wanted to say bed and breakfast means a single-family dwelling or a multi-family dwelling?
A single-family or multi, and/or a multi-family.
Yeah, there's the definition of multi-family dwelling.
Oh.
It's under dwelling.
Okay. That's why I did see it.
Yeah, it's multi-family dwelling, and then a single-family dwelling, and a common wall, two-family dwelling. But that multi-family dwelling has to do with the definition for a residence, for residential purposes. But not including a cabin, hotel, motel, rooming house, or other such accommodation used for transient occupancy. So would this multi-family dwelling definition contradict what we're referring to for multi-family under bed and breakfast? Because that's where lodging is provided for compensation on a night-to-night basis.
Yeah, because it's written in that next sentence, designed or used as residence for three or more families. Oh, living independently, it's multi-family dwelling. I guess a bed breakfast is, when you're staying there, you're like family anyway, I guess.
Well, if we state.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
For a single-family dwelling and/or multi-family dwelling, then we would be cutting out the option for a two-family dwelling to be used as a bed and breakfast.
Right. Oh, I see what you're saying. So like a duplex would be not allowed to be a bed and breakfast?
That's a very good question. Because it has to be, to be, to be a bed and breakfast by the Ohio Revised Code, it has to be owner-occupied, there could be no more than six dwelling units, no more than 16 guests at a time. It doesn't say, to my knowledge, it doesn't say anything about it has to be that one unit that, it doesn't sound right that it would have to be one of those dwelling units be the owner.
Right.
And the owner is obviously entitled to privacy. So I don't necessarily think a dwelling or a duplex would be excluded.
Okay, so a single-family, multi-family for bed and breakfast. Remove the second half of the sentence.
But would we have to specify what Inter-Autor Dr. Goebrich just said was that you can't have more than 16? You know, we're rebuilding in not more than three sleeping rooms are devoted. Didn't you say that the Ohio Revised Code says bed and breakfast, you can't have more than, or did I misunderstand?
Uh, you can't have more than six guest rooms.
Six guest rooms.
And it can't, the number of guests served can exceed, I think, 16.
So then do we want to go back and reference how many sleeping rooms?
I don't think it's necessary.
Okay.
Because you want to, you can set the limit, however.
If we want it to be less than?
If you want it to be less.
Okay.
But the cap is preempted by the Ohio Revised Code.
All right, understood. Thank you.
So why can't we just reference the Ohio Revised Code here?
That sounds great, yes.
We can do that.
Yeah.
Do you see any changes that need to be done for block or building?
This is probably where I would need to have a drawing to understand what it's saying. But if you guys understand, that's fine.
Height of building is from the roof peak all the way down to the ground for the height of building.
I'm talking about block.
The block in between streets.
Yeah.
That's a block.
Okay. Then I don't need a drawing.
Okay. And it's any changes that need to be done to business services? Or cemetery? City, this is mostly definitions that are used for when we are referring to certain things in the code.
Shorter way of referring to something.
Yes. Now, drive-through facilities, I'm not sure if we have any drive-throughs that are in residential districts.
I did have a question about the congregate or group home.
Yeah.
Definition there. That states in their facilities, more than 16 persons, should be considered hospitals. We have like a Carlyle place out there that they have more than 16 residents out there. They don't really consider it a hospital.
I don't know.
You're not sure if there's more than 16 rooms out there?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Oh, I would venture, I would be surprised if there's not 16 or more.
Which facility?
I mean, if you walk in and you go down and you go around.
Which? I can't picture where.
I always refer to it as the Carlyle House, I don't know if it has a different name, out there on Whetstone Street. Um, before. Yeah, before you get to Alter Care on the same side of the road. Oh, well, I forget, you're new to the city.
Yeah, Mike's not familiar.
I'm sorry. Off Beale Avenue.
Okay. Oh, okay, yeah. Yeah, that'd be considered a care facility. That might be, that might fall under hospital. Because the, well, you have a whole separate section for group residential facility further down.
Oh, down here.
And then hospital containing beds for at least four patients, allowing for overnight and continuous care, diagnosis and treatment of human ailments.
So I have a question.
Yep.
How does the definition for congregate or group home apply to a nursing home such as Alter Care?
I don't know.
Because they have more than 16 people and they're not considered hospitals, I don't think.
There is a definition for nursing home, a page or so.
But aren't they, they're, they're regulated by the state, aren't they?
Mm-hmm. Where do you see a definition for nursing home, Vicki?
Well, these pages aren't, um.
No, but.
Yeah, they're in alphabetical order.
I was gonna say, they are in alphabetical order, so.
Yeah.
Nursing home includes convalescent.
Convalescent extended care facilities.
...care shelter and nursing services. Is unable to, responsible for themselves.
So is Carlyle House at the level of a nursing home?
Was it always, was it a nursing home before what it is now?
I've always viewed it as an assisted living facility. But then there's different stages, in other words, if you need this much assistance, you're, there's like, because I had a gentleman that I had power of attorney for out there at the Carlyle House, and if he needed help for medicine and he needed help for a bath, there were numbers assigned to that. And depending on the total of those numbers, then decided what your pay rate was. And to me, I believe there's individuals out there that, I mean, are not able to take care of themselves at all. But I guess that would be the question of the Carlyle House, or to the Carlyle House.
Seems that maybe the permitted use is not the correct one that we may have on file for.
What do you have on file for the Carlyle, or you don't?
I'll have to look.
Okay.
They're under, that's, that's south of Beale, right?
Yes.
That's in the.
Is that correct?
That's an SU zoning district, so that's a permitted, permitted use in that zoning. So, yeah, it's, it's allowed in that district. Nursing homes, care facilities, yeah, that's a permitted use. So I'm assuming we argue that's nursing home, care facility per se.
I would say that they are all right, but just for the definition.
Right.
In a situation like that, that they may not, not necessarily be the Carlyle House.
Right.
Another facility that if 16 is appropriate there.
And if, and if they're two, there were room, if it's, that's more than, oh, I see, not more than, that's people, but if they have more than eight rooms, you'd have that.
And group home. Is that not a group home that we have on the corner of Southern Avenue and Walnut Street? Brick home, it used to be the, we used to be a doctor had his business there. Yeah, the corner of Walnut Street and Southern. If you would turn right, that would take you down towards GE, former GE.
Oh.
I know what you're talking about. There on the west side? The southwest corner?
Yeah. Yeah, it's on southwest corner.
My direction.
I can see, I can, I can.
Yeah, it's one floor.
See the house.
There's an alley that runs between the home and another home.
Is that considered a group home, that property? That you mentioned?
I was under the impression that it was a group home.
Because that's in the R.
Well.
R3.
I don't necessarily think that more than 16 people live there.
Oh, no, no.
Okay.
There, I don't believe.
So I don't think that would be considered a group home based on that definition.
Okay.
Okay.
Because there's not more than 16.
All right. So just leave 16 in there? If it's more than 16, then what would that be then? It would be under care facility or nursing home?
I don't know.
Okay.
Something I can look into.
Okay.
But it bugs me that anything more than 16 will be considered hospitals. There's a specific definition for hospital in the Ohio Revised Code.
Yeah. Because, I mean, there's one that's going to be coming up once construction starts is the old nursing home that Salvation Army owns. I talked to the architect today and they're trying to finalize plans for the renovation. So I'm just curious if people are going to be there overnight, or if it's a, if it's going to be a shelter. I don't know. So.
Suppose we can call and ask?
Yep.
Now, just so I understand here correctly, on this, what I call group home, you're stating that you don't think that that home on Southern and Walnut would be considered a group home because it doesn't have more than 16?
We don't know.
Uh, correct. So the definition I'm looking at here on the screen is congregate or group home means a residential care facility in which not fewer than nine, but more than 16 persons are provided with room, boards, specialized care, rehabilitative services, and supervision in a family environment. I don't think that, I don't, I mean, more than 16, but less than.
But for the sake of argument, if there are fewer than nine, but not more than 16, that facility would be considered a congregate or group home?
Correct. But I don't think it's big enough, I don't think it's big enough to house nine people, let alone 16.
Okay.
All right.
You're talking about the facility that Vicki mentioned of.
Correct, that's on the southwest corner of Walnut, so. Correct. I don't think that there are nine people who are there because it's the size of a regular house.
All right.
So then that begs the question, what would that be considered then? That building, house? If it's not considered a group home?
But if it's, if they have less than nine, what would it be, would it be considered?
Right. Or do we not need to? Or do we not need to concern ourselves with that?
Probably not, because we're just doing the definitions.
Great, okey doke.
Thank you, Mr. Goldberg. You're hereby excused from the meeting. All right, um.
Well, when you get down to a group residential facility, you know, I mean, that pretty much kind of, kind of covers the similar use.
Right.
So.
Because like what I just mentioned, the Salvation Army property is going to be, fall under group residential facility if it's going to be a shelter. So but I don't know. I, I have not seen any documentation that they're going to apply to be a shelter. But I don't think it's allowed in the, in the zoning district. I mean, I know it's a nursing home before that, but what they're proposing, I, I, I'm not sure what the use is going to be.
But at that point, when it was a nursing home before, it was grandfathered in.
But since it's a change of use now.
Yeah. And I thought they stated that they were not going to use that facility for shelter.
Okay.
When they applied to the BZA for, for use.
Okay.
I may be wrong about that, but I, I thought that's what I remembered. I'd have to reiterate.
Okay. So going back up to the other definitions. I just only found just a few grammar things. And I think also do, well, I thought maybe we should have added something, a section in here in dwelling. Or the non-permitted use of because of the influx that we've had of, of sheds being installed in town, they're not allowed to be used for living. They're only use, only allowed to be for storage or recreational. And you can't have, you can't, you can't be a single-family dwelling. So I'm wondering if we need to add something in there about well, I know it would fall under accessory, an accessory structure.
Right, and I think that's already in the regulations.
Okay.
Concerning accessory structures, that they're not allowed to be used for living facilities.
All right. Is there anything on, any additional changes for dwelling? I was wondering if that section where it says fireproof party wall, meeting local building code, if that should stay, say, state of Ohio building code regulations.
Okay, now where are you at?
Under.
Commonwealth two-family dwelling? Is that the one you're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay.
Where it says halfway through that, it says fireproof party wall, meeting local building code requirements. If that should say meeting state of Ohio. Ohio building code. I'm not sure what the latest, I think it's 2019 regulations.
I'm not sure what the latest is for building codes. But we do not have a local building code, excuse me, local building code per se, anyways, right?
No, we don't.
Our code. So if we wanted to change that to the Ohio building code requirements, would probably make more sense since we do not have local building codes.
Right.
So we want to remove the word.
Local. And add the state of Ohio building code and whatever the year that's most current being enforced. I'll have to look up the year.
Instead of putting in there, in the, instead of putting the year in there, just state it as the current.
Oh. That's Ohio code. Okay.
So that way it doesn't have to be changed every time the code is revised.
Now I know why I should have brought a pencil.
So you can erase it.
Meeting the current state of Ohio building code.
Thank you.
Building code requirements. Okay. Assortment, essential services. Failure of delivery. Family. I always thought, I always thought floor area should really be square footage.
You mean it should say square footage rather than floor area?
Yeah, but I wonder if square footage was further down. I don't remember seeing it.
Nope, it's not in here.
It's not. It's okay for what it is. Garage. Group residential facility. All right. I don't see any other changes for. I don't see any changes in home occupation or hospital. Hotel. Industrialized unit. The description of lot. I really don't want to touch the description of lot that would, I need Isaac from McKievers input on that because I think it might change. Because him and Dylan are reviewing the subdivision standards.
Yes.
Or regulations. So I really don't want to speak on any of that, of this. For manufactured home. Manufacturing Housing Construction and Safety Standards Act of 1974, there's a revision date of March 15th, 2021. That's of their state or the federal website for manufactured homes. And that will have to be added in.
Okay, may I ask you to repeat that again, Mike?
Yeah, under, under manufactured homes.
Okay.
Where it says Act of 1974.
Yes.
After that, I added revision date of March 15th, 2021. And Miranda, I'll give you a copy of this. We'll get this. Seeing the time. We're only going to go over a couple more definitions. Any changes to manufacturing definition? Or home, manufactured home community? Or modular home?
Under the permanently cited manufactured home?
Permanently cited. Where's that at? Bill, I'm sorry. It's under manufactured home community or?
No, it's a couple down. It's a nurse, past nursery, parking space, parking area, then permanently cited manufactured home.
Okay.
On, and number three there, the.
The roof pitch.
Requirement of the roof pitch, structure has a minimum four twelve roof pitch. I don't know what the current standard is now, but that has been an issue with the BZA.
Right.
From a personal standpoint, our home is a manufactured home.
Yeah.
It has the three twelve roof pitch and, you know, it's twenty some years old. We just now replaced the roof on it. The roof is held up good. I think with the new construction standards for manufactured homes, I think the three twelve roof pitch is adequate anymore for withholding weather conditions. I think that should be changed to a minimum three twelve roof pitch.
Okay.
That's pretty much the standard of the manufactured home construction anyways.
Yeah, Landon and I discussed this the other day. With the building of metal buildings as homes in town, that some of their roof pitches are almost as flat as the three twelves. And we don't, weren't regulating that. So it's, it almost be to the point of was it after a certain year that they were made that the roof pitch went to three twelve?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Ours was 2020.
Okay.
No, 2000, 2020, that's fifty years. But it was a 2000 manufacturer. So manufactured date. And it was a three twelve, then I don't know what the standard was then.
Okay. All right.
Just saying that it seems to be very adequate.
Okay.
The three twelve for the, the construction standards today, the manufactured homes.
Okay. I think we're going to stop on the permanently cited manufactured home section for definitions today. And we'll pick up at our next session. Can we possibly schedule it for November 25th, 2024 at four o'clock?
That's fine with my schedule.
That should work for me.
Okay. And I'll get a hold of the other two members next week to see if it's okay. I can't think of the word I need.
One thing before we end, I think we need to take attendance.
Oh. Attendance for today's meeting. Roll call. Vicki DeShawn.
Here.
Bill Stuckert.
Here.
James Me, absent. Landon Hill, absent. Mike Keefe, here. What's, for adjournment, what's the, I can't think of the word.
I move to adjourn.
Oh, who, who, who moves to adjourn?
Or you can just.
Can I adjourn the ad hoc meeting today? 4:53 PM.